... Blair?
Here.
Councilman Good?
Here.
Councilwoman Lamerson?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Scholl is excused. Councilman Sishka?
Here.
We do have a quorum.
All right, thank you. We do have three items. Thanks, everyone, for coming out today. We do have public comment cards available. If you'd like to speak on any one of these three items, please fill out a public comment card, and we'll just start with item 3A.
Presentation on the pavement preservation program and its integration into lucidity.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Eric Stewart, Public Works. For those of you who don't know me, I'm a very passionate person about pavement management. That's a pretty cool subject, and we've got a great team that help us with this. We have Donald Collison and also Steve Guizel. Don could be here, but Steve's out running rejuvenator today. But a very strong team that has put this together for us today.
Speaker, please.
Yes. Is that good? When Public Works approached the city council back in February, we came to you with a couple of things. When we had just found out that IMS had finished running our roads, giving us pavement conditions of all of our assets, and we also found out that we had about $100 million in roads that were backlogged, and that means roads that needed to be rebuilt today, and we didn't have the $100 million to do that. So today, this presentation is kind of share with you our plan moving forward to implement our new funding that council gave us this fiscal year. We got an additional $5 million. That's, last year, we had 3.5, now we have 8.5. And so now, we're moving forward with a robust budget to tackle our pavement management program. Let me grab a breath there.
Are we allowed to interrupt you at any time?
Absolutely, please do.
You know, there's always a good reason to take a four-letter word and define it.
Yes.
You use the word need, and I think it's very important to disseminate to the public the public health and safety and why we spent the money where we spent it when we spent it.
Thank you. In fact, my presentation today. Okay, so this is just an overview of what we're going to cover today. Our IMS implementation, the current state of our lucid pavement management module, which was one of our latest tools in our toolbox, and how we'll be using this new tool, along with other tools in our toolbox, to put together our pavement management strategy as we move forward this fiscal year. And these other tools are our understanding of the basics of pavement preservation, other pavement treatment selection tools we'll use to move forward, and how we'll choose roadways to receive these treatments. And lastly, how we'll double-check ourselves to choose with the chosen treatments to ensure that we're making the greatest impact on the system and have a positive effect on the overall network health of the paved assets. First, our IMS implementation. IMS collected the data, they processed the data in their lab, they created over 7,000 segments, and linked the data collected along with the overall PCI for all of those individual segments. The data they collected includes smooth index, structural index, crack type and frequency, so alligator longitudinal and lateral cracking, any rutting failures, edge failures, ravelling and stripping, potholes and road cuts, as well as a series of photos for each individual asset. And you'll see on the map here on this PowerPoint that at each intersection, there seems to be a node. Well, that's the beginning and the end of every segment, hence the 7,000-plus segments in our system. And for this particular map we're looking at, they're color-coded. So the green are the very healthy roads, and the red and dark orange are roads that are in disrepair and need addressing immediately. Can you go down by my street a little bit? We'll get there. Another tool, this is our newest tool, pretty exciting stuff here. This is our lucid pavement management module. I just realized I printed in .4 font or something here. I need to reminder here, don't want to miss anything here.
It's north side, in case you didn't know.
Pardon me?
The street's north side.
Yes, right. So what are the, as, one of the things with new software implementation is that there's always hiccups, issues, challenges that arise. One of the first issues that arose was that when we took our data collected in the field and brought it into the lucid pavement module, our lucid pavement module was expecting things that corresponded to our GIS segments. And I'll say, for instance, take a four-block area, where our pavement management information broken into four pieces, but our GIS has it as one segment. So there was additional programming, things that slowed down this implementation process before we can move forward. Now that's been corrected, and we're running reports, which is great. We're finding, when we run the reports, there's some other information. Some of that, the information we're finding is that the program says, hey, let's go over here to the east side of town and grab a 400-foot section of pavement, let's rebuild that. Let's go over to the west side of town on the same project to 200 feet here, north side, 1,200 feet here. Now, we know realistically, we can't get the benefits of, of...
Economies? Economies is good.
Economy of scale, thank you. I can't even read it. We can't get the benefits of economy of scale by having contractor mobilize to these three different locations and then doing these little itty-bitty projects. And so, it's not lost information, we're still programming it to correct these things. And so at this time, it's a tool, it's giving us a lot of data, much, much data, but as we move forward, we're going to use the other tools in our toolbox to actually hone down our pavement management strategy for this fiscal year. Any questions so far? Okay. One of those tools is our understanding of pavement performance over time, and how to apply preservation treatments at specific times throughout the life of that asset so we can prolong its life and get the best performance out of it. This here is a generic pavement performance curve. On the left edge of the chart, we have the pavement condition index. And so the higher you go, from red to green, the healthier the pavement, the higher the PCI number, the pavement condition index number. The purple line there indicates the health of the pavement as time goes on, and you see it drop exponentially over time. And the blue line indicates preservation treatments that when you apply them, we increase the health of the asset and we prolong its life. And so this is a very generic curve. But I want to review that with you before we got into these. So this here is a much more realistic pavement performance curve that shows how utilizing simple treatments like crack seal and chip seals can actually prolong the life of an asset, and we can get a solid 20 years out of an asset by using just crack seal and chip seal, and then reconstruct it after 20 years. If we do nothing, you see the red line, pavement depreciates, maybe you get 15, 20 years out of it. If we actually do these other treatments, we can get a longer life out of it. But as you know, we've been using a lot of rejuvenators and other preservation treatments, and here you'll see what we call 30-year service life performance curve. And all of the blue arcs there, those are different treatments. So every time we add a treatment, it increases the health, prolongs the life. And we call this sequencing our pavement treatments. And there's a science to doing this, and we're following industry standards in doing Okay, another tool we have, so we've talked about how to stack or sequence our treatments. Another tool we've done is we've taken what we reviewed on our performance chart here, we've taken those treatments, and we put it into basically a spreadsheet to help us understand what's going to happen to how we proportion out these things and calculate what our funding necessary for these is. And of course, this is a 20-year service life, this is not the program we're proposing, but a lot of agencies do this, and you can see over time, you end up with something, this, our assets here would require $10.4 million if we only chose to do crack seal and chip seal. But now, we're actually doing a 30-year service life program, so by doing more preservation treatments, we're actually reducing our overall annual funding required to maintain the entire system. And so as you can see, just going back between the two, we reduce our reconstructions and rehabilitations, and we increase our preservations. So I wanted to point that tool out as too, as well. So now, we've proportioned out how we want to fund these things. We run these reports out of the lucid module, we have lots of data, we've proportioned out the funding and what they would be used on, but now we're just going back to cross-check to make sure that the pavement treatments that we've selected are the right ones for those assets, those roadways. This chart is a kind of a very rough tool, it's a pavement asset selection table, and so if you go to the left column where it says rejuvenator and go down that column, if those field conditions we measured, the roughness, the structural integrity, the longitudinal cracks, et cetera, if those things qualify as being in good shape, those field measurements, then we would apply rejuvenator. And on the opposite end of the scale, for full death reclamation, basically if everything is in poor rating, then that's when we reconstruct the roads. And so this tool is used just to double-check to make sure what our lucid module is telling us is the right thing. Homestretch now. Just to remind ourselves, the overall goal is to ensure that we maintain or improve upon the overall health of the entire pavement system. So all assets combined together, we are improving everything as a whole. So once we've run the lucid reports, cross-reference this with other tools in our toolbox, we then get a list of proposed roads associated with proposed treatments, and now we're going to use a cross-check to make sure that whatever we're doing now is going to improve our system so that next year, we don't have wasted efforts on our funding sources. What I'm going to share with you now is actually a example of what throwing more money at a roadway system does if you don't select the right roads, the right treatments at the right time. So this is a case study over a four-year period where you can see, on the lower-left side, if we start with fiscal year 11 and 12, that year, they spent $1.2 million on preservation, 5.3 on rehabilitation, 3.5 on reconstruction. And the overall effect, if you go above that, you see we started out that fiscal year with a service life of 8.44, but over that fiscal year, we dropped it by .18 years of service life. Well, that's kind of a random and abstract number, but that equates to about a $2.4 million loss on a system that was once originally worth $280 million. So in a sense, in essence, they actually spent $10 million, but they lost $2.4 million in asset health. So wrong treatment, wrong roads, wrong time. As you move forward in time, the next fiscal year, they spent another $3 million on reconstruction and continued to lose asset value. And over a total of four years, 0.75 years of service life was lost, which equates to a little over $10 million in loss in the system. And when you look at the system, it was once worth $280 million when it was first constructed. To replace it, it's actually closer to $500 million, a half a billion dollars to replace that system. And so every year that we spend funding on these assets, we need to make sure and be very careful that we're selecting the right roads for those treatments. And I said homestretch, and we're almost there. So this is a network evaluation we did for this fiscal year that we're proposing, and it shows, basically, we've quantified all of the treatments we're proposing here, and we've shown how it will affect the overall system. And if you look to the lower right-hand corner, you'll see a net gain of 192 there, and that's a, an abstract unit of measure, but I'll equate it to .28 years of service life that we're gaining in our system. So no matter where we're at in our system, where we're a PCI of 59 or remaining service life of eight years, whatever we've done, we've increased the service life of our overall system by a quarter of a year by doing this planned program. Anyhow, I know that's a lot. I did want to present that, that is our approach as we put our pavement management program on wheels right now. We're finishing up the selection of our roads using the lucid module, we're double-checking everything, and this is our plan as we move forward, and we wanted to run this by you for any comments you may have, and at this time, we'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you. Questions, comments from the council? Councilman Blair?
Yeah. My question continues to go back to roughly 2010, 2012, when we knew that it was costing the city hundreds of thousands of dollars in road and alley blading and grading due to the fact that we were using AB and, you know, graders and employee hours. And so, we came in with a mill product, and then we put a rejuvenator on it, which was going to last somewhere in the neighborhood of roughly seven to 10 years. Well, we're at that seven-to-10-year mark today. Where in this plan does it show all those roads we did in the past, where they fall in the system? There's roads out there, I see that behind Pleasant Street, that we're now doing alley reconstruction as we speak, on both sides of Sheldon Street, where the mill and fill has fallen apart because of our dump trucks and our trash trucks, and now it's time to address those.
Right.
And I guess my question becomes, in the overall system that we have in Prescott, have those utilities been tied into this system as far as water and sewer lines, and then looking forward to a time when we'll pave these to full pavement sections, instead of having now recurrent maintenance problems with the mill and fill that we used?
And are we talking specifically about the alleys?
We're talking about roads and alleys.
Roads and alleys, so...
Yeah, I can speak of Delano, only, and I share that only because I live there, I don't expect you to pave it, but because of the fact that the school buses use that road all the time instead of Rossar Street, which is a fully paved segment, that mill and fill now that it's dried out because of the rejuvenator that was put on it has made it crumble and crack, and so we have a lot of these mill and fill roads that are now losing their integrity, and I want to know how we have worked into this plan, how to replace those streets.
So I can speak about the utilities?
And in regards, you mentioned the two alleys right by Sheldon Street, and yes, the sewer rehabilitation program was completed in their last year. All of that sewer was pipe burst, so we have entire new main line and services throughout that. That is being completed by Streets Maintenance in the alleys. And then as far as the streets, yes, and Eric has those in the program.
It's actually, I'm glad you brought this up because that seven-to-nine years was pretty darn accurate. When, if you don't mind, what I'll do is...
I'm not looking for an answer today, I just want to make sure, because my memory's long like an elephant, and we promise people out there certain things, and we've done certain things to prolong our maintenance of these things to save us money, and we're at the point now where it's going to start costing the community money. I want to know how we go back and fix those things that we've promised the community.
Okay, and I'll answer that. So these roads were easily identifiable in the lucid map they created for us. Basically, everything that was in deep red were mill-paved roads, for the most part, in the local areas and alleyways. Now, our alleyways were not measured as part of our system assessment. We know the condition they're in, and when we end up treating those, we'll treat them with something comparable to what it has now, but has greater longevity. The, I don't know if you've been by the transfer station recently, but down there, they've milled up, actually, they took millings, paved millings, and they've crushed them, and we have last heard about a 25,000 cubic yards of millings down there, processed millings. And the cool thing about that is that they're sitting there waiting for our next preservation treatments. Not that we would plan more mill-paved roads, but it's there to do what we would call recycling methods now, whether it be a cold-in-place recycling with an overlay or chip seal on top, or other methods that are better than mill-pave, but aren't quite things that we would do on Willow Creek Road and whatnot. So we have thought about that. We intentionally decided not to get rid of that pile of millings down on Sundog Ranch Road because we want to do these recycling projects with a lot of those roads. And it's good because a lot of those roads don't have curb and gutter, and so if we decide we're going to pulverize and pave on top of them, it's a good selection to do that, too. And also, it's lower volume, so it would have good survivability with some of the right recycling techniques we're proposing. It's not likely we'll push forward with one of those this fiscal year. What we're looking at now in our lucid reports is there's a lot of minor collectors that are popping up, and since we've already tackled a lot of our major collectors and major arterials, we're looking at addressing our minor collectors in some other roads that aren't quite locals, but they're roads that have a higher ADT of 1,000 to 3,000 vehicles a day. So I hope that answers your question.
Not really.
Oh.
I guess it does partially, but I guess my point being is I know we have to have to look at mobility of an asphalt company.
Right.
So when we go out to contract, we want to contract X amount of asphalt in a given area, and certainly, being in the same geographic area makes sense so they're not having to mobilize all over the community. So I guess my point being is we know through this system that we have a bunch of those mill and fill program in Prescott Heights that had a bunch of dirt roads that have been covered. So at what point in time do you look at that to say, we are now going to release a full-blown paving operation, not necessarily curb and gutter, because now we're trying to, you know, put lips on a pig, so to speak?
Right.
Because most people don't want that, they just want a smooth surface to drive on. At what point in time do we add that to our overall pricing system to get those done? Because they're falling apart, and like I said, we're getting into the maintenance factor now.
Mm-hmm.
Where now, all of a sudden, I see our patching truck out there every week with three guys on it, patching potholes. At what point in time is there no return on our investment, and we need to fix them permanently?
And so that's, thank you for asking that question that way. Now is the time. And so at this time, we're now looking at, like I said, we've saved our millings pile, we're talking to different vendors that have different treatment processes that we can use. And I don't know if we'll get it done this fiscal year, but we're planning on a large-scale treatment of these local roads, and I know exactly where you're talking about, and it's very hilly.
Are we talking about, sorry to take so long, Mayor, but are we talking about on those very roads, just going over with a mill and fill on top of what's existing?
Not really. So to be specific, there are a couple of different treatments we could do, where we come in and we have a machine called a pulverizer, and it's like a milling machine, but it has twice as many teeth and moves twice as fast, or the wheel turns twice as fast, the drum. And it pulverizes up back into ABC, so whatever's there, we pulverize and blend that into the existing subgrade, turn it into a usable base course, moisture condition that, compact it, and pave over that, so...
Okay, I get that.
Okay.
That's basically what we did with the AB before we put what's on there today.
Mm-hmm.
So you're just going to re-grind that up?
Right.
Come back in with another surface on top?
Mm-hmm.
And if we can get another seven to 10 years out of that, based upon rehab material, I think that's great. But I think that the ones that are heavily traveled, and maybe, again, we can get with the school district, or somebody to reroute the buses that are not on standard streets, and I call them substandard because they're not paved to a standard of what a regular asphalt street would be paved, like Rossar Street, using it, coming from Taylor Hicks off of Campbell.
Mm-hmm.
Instead, they come down Delano, where they have a mill and fill, and there's constant, you know, holes in the road.
Mm-hmm.
So maybe it's safety for the buses, but there's got to be a way that we can circumvent us having to patch and maintain these roads and put these buses, you know, on some kind of harder surface that makes sense.
I like that. Thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you, I'll quit beating you up now.
No, thank you for bringing that up.
Councilman Good?
Thank you, Mayor. Eric, I know I've been monitoring this whole lucid program for a long time. A year ago, I was told it would be finished. And apparently, even though it's somewhat completed, it doesn't look like it's really the tool that you expected to have by this time. From your descriptions of these segments that aren't really connected to make an efficient plan, it seems like we still don't have a usable program with the investment that we put into this. And I'm kind of surprised that we were assured that this program could do what we expected it to do, and to find out that it looks at these small, different segments and then kicks out a project list that's scattered all over the place, and you don't have the efficient economies to be able to do it in good, continuous segments. So is this going to get there, or you're going to have to start doing some, what my old professor called interocular fusion test? Which means eyeballing it and trying to figure out how to put together a plan that's going to get us to an acceptable network and hopefully, a good quality network, and maybe even something better than that overall. So what's the timeline? How much extra are we going to have to spend over the next few years to achieve this? And is it, is it really going to happen?
Mm-hmm.
That's probably six questions at once.
Well, that's okay, because we've been scratching our head, too. We were, as soon as we started running the reports, we started asking these same questions. And the more we talked to our consultants that did this implementation for us, IMS, we found that the system works the way it is, but what it tells us is things based on the information that was input into the system. And so because we were approaching this as novices, this new module, they said, here's the services we can provide, a list of so forth, and we said, that sounds great, and we kind of cherry picked a little bit, and we pushed it through council. And they implemented it. And then it turns to find out that some of the other things we cherry picked through, we could have really used, for instance, the segmenting. And so there's something called supersegments, which is grouping your segments into, let's just say, I'll use an example that has no base in reality, but Pinion Oaks, say, three roads in there would require a chip seal, and another couple of roads would require a mill and fill or something. Well, we would group that together based on the actual pavement condition, and so that we didn't come in and do these two roads, we did these four roads because they were almost at the trigger point that would have required that treatment, but not quite there. That way, we can get the economy of scale again. So we don't have that programming done yet. We have supersegments based on the conditions measured in the field, but not things that make sense to us as the agency that maintains the system. So we will continue this fiscal year to go and complete this program, programming, for lack of better words, until the system is complete. I estimate we'll be approaching council in the spring with a new list of projects that have been selected from this program. That's my hope, fingers crossed. And so as far as timeline, I would expect we would see that in the next six months.
So in the next six months, you'll have a good plan to implement over the next year?
Well, our hope is actually, when we push that button and say go, and it spits out a report, that we have a five-year plan on how to approach things. So as we start moving forward fiscal year after fiscal year, of course, we reassess every year, things may change on that list, but we create an... But we create an overall CIP plan for our streets.
And you'll apply the financial projections to implement that plan and complete it?
Right. And right now, we're hoping we can continue doing the 8.5 million every year to keep knocking down that backlog.
Do you expect to be able to do it within your current financial projections? Or do you expect that it's going to be costing the city more?
At this time, and that's a good question, but I'll rephrase it. If we continue doing 8.5 million a year over so many years, we're going to be able to increase the overall health at a certain rate. And so, the more money you throw at it, the higher the rate. At this time, we're looking at a 6.5 PCI instead of a 59, sorry, 65 instead of a 59.7, whatever, over a five-year period, based on our current spending. So, we're hoping that as we progress forward, we see better results, it becomes a more efficient tool, and we can actually achieve that goal. And from what I'm looking at, from all the other tools we have, I see that's very feasible. It's just a matter of we'll continue to do the internal programming using IT and our pavement management program staff to do that work.
Well, all I can say is I hope your strategy works.
And I'm very confident it will. Thank you. Councilman Lamerson?
Thank you. I really appreciate your optimism there, Eric. You know, as I listen every day to the public about the roads and traffic and everything that's going on in the community, very similar to Councilman Good here, I have some major concerns over the long range of what's going on with our roads in the community. As we all know, being the work center for a big part of the county, we have a lot of people coming in here from other places like Chino Valley, Prescott Valley, Uppi County, blah, blah, blah. And yet, it's the citizens of Prescott that's incumbent to make sure the roads are in good shape. And I have, I don't know what the word would be, but I think the public has a right to know, millions in dollars. What are you projecting that this community needs to maintain our roads on an annual basis? Millions of dollars. I mean, they have a right, no, it's their money. What do we need to, we're going to go into a budget cycle here pretty soon. We're going to sit there and chop up the money, you know, their money, and we're going to look at it for different reasons. And some of them are going to be with amenities, some of them are going to be with public health and safeties, some are going to be for, you know, police and fire, blah, blah, blah. At the end of the day, what do you estimate this community needs to spend to maintain the roads on an annual basis in the city of Prescott? To keep them to the standard that we already have? Now, we're not even talking about moving forward...
Right.
...anticipating having to deal with all the growth that the rest of the area is dumping on us.
Right.
I'm talking about right now, what do you think this community needs a plan to spend?
To maintain its current health.
Right.
And so that's actually much lower than 8.5. So to maintain, we're looking closer to $6 million. And I think Craig and I presented that back in February to flatline, say where we're at, we're looking at similar 5.6, 5.8 million dollars.
So the anticipation moving forward is we're going to have to increase that by about 2.5 million in anticipation of what's coming at us from outside?
That's our understanding as well, yes.
All right, thank you. I just want to share this publicly and hope that people from Simpo are listening, because at the end of the day, this isn't just the city of Prescott's financial burden.
Thank you. Any public comment?
No, Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Eric, for the presentation. Appreciate it. You're welcome. Let's move on to item 3B, please.
Presentation on pedestrian scramble test at Monizuma and Gurley traffic signal.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Ian Mattingly, Public Works. So today, I will be providing some information on the city's pedestrian scramble test, which has been underway at the intersection here for some time now. At any time, if you have questions, feel free to ask or interrupt, please. So the scramble system was installed to test its effectiveness on reducing backing of northbound traffic on Monizuma Street caused by right-turning vehicles and pedestrian conflicts at Gurley Street. That was the purpose of the test. The scramble was chosen because it separates vehicle and pedestrian movements, and the location did not have any other safety issues that needed to be addressed, and pedestrian traffic had little delay. The city installed the scramble on September 10th, and it has been operating now for 43 days. So, a couple key points to mention about the installation. One is that the test operation is set up to require pedestrians to use the push buttons to cross the street. That is different from the prior operation that we had there, which had the signal automatically recalling the pedestrian walk indications every cycle. So that's, that's a change that we did. And that was an operational benefit to the scramble system, as opposed to the system that, the regular system that was in place. Steph also implemented significant timing changes to give the scramble operation its best chance at succeeding. And many of those changes were installed in the field the day, the day of the test turn on, and then the following week, just small improvements to try to make that work as, as good as possible. Additionally, as it is a test, the layout does not include all the striping, signing, or other improvements that would be done if it was a permanent installation. So that should be clear. So, we just, I just mentioned the timing changes. So these timing changes can be seen here graphically, which compares, there's, there's basically two sets of timings here. The upper two are the pre-test timing in the, in the normal operation. The upper one is the maximum time that the signal could extend to. And the minimum is, you know, what you might see slightly under 50 seconds during an off-peak period. And then below, we have the two times that are in place with the scramble. And it could flex, you understand that it could vary in between the maxes on either of these systems, depending on the demand of the vehicle. But you can see under the scramble maximum timing, that when you add, we've added some additional, that red in there, that is some changes to the signal timing on the north and south through movement that we increased. We allowed vehicles to extend that timing as needed to try to solve the issue that we were looking at. And so you can see that we're allowing more time there in the red. And then that light blue on the right, under scramble max timing, that's the ped-only crossing time. So it's about 32, somewhere in the 30-second range with the walk and the clearance times. So you can see that the cycle time, and during peak hours, is, is quite long on the, on scramble. But it can drop back down to pretty quick cycle times. If you omit the push, the pushing of the button, it's pretty efficient. And so that timing is reaching over two minutes. So that's a long cycle time for traditional operation. It's not really a typical for scramble, because they're not very common. I think this might be the only one in Arizona at this time. The pre-test and scramble, scramble minimum cycle times, again, are similar. So, the timing changes including, again, allowing the northbound Monizuma Green to extend to over 50 seconds when traffic demands require. And what this has done is basically transfer some of the delay from Monizuma Street to Gurley Street. If that makes sense, because now we're coming up and letting Monizuma go longer, so the cars coming on Gurley have to wait longer. So, we've basically transferred delay over there. And you can do some of that because Gurley has two lanes, and Monizuma only has one. So, yeah, so overall, when this occurs, again, we get those really long cycle times, two minutes, but that's during the peak hours. By removing the pedestrian recall, that's how we get that savings in the, in the signal. And I think I have that later on, but I'll mention it here. We had, in the AM peak periods, watching this signal, we had phase omission. People did not push the button for the ped recall, or, sorry, the ped activation in the AM peak, 37% on average of the time. So during the AM peak, you actually had a lot of periods where you'd have that really short cycle time, and so things worked pretty well. In most of the PM peaks, you got no omissions of the pedestrian phase. There's just people there every time, and people are starting to learn that they have to push the button. We were getting some accidental omissions, which is not a good thing, but now people are pushing the button. And so in the PM, we get about zero, I'm averaging zero percent of, so we always have the ped phase. So in the PM, that's important, because in the PM, then our cycle time is very long, and we have more delay. So, I'm going to, we'll move on from this and come back to some of these things. But, an important part of the test is public comment and feedback, because the users can report conditions, operational problems, and express overall sentiment towards the measure. During the test, the city has received, and this is as of Friday, so we did receive some more, I'm not going to include them here, but we had 107 unique public comments as of the 18th. And these were received through various ways, social media posts, email, web slinger email, direct email, and phone calls to the city. We broke these out here, just, you know, if you, if you're interested in seeing the difference between some of the Facebook comments, for instance, and other social media comments, and web slinger, and then Public Works. But you can see that of the 107, I don't have it up there, but I have it here, 88 actually included a statement for or against the scramble system. So about 19 were just neutral, maybe they said, hey, I would recommend this, or, you know, this is something that didn't relate to, they oppose or support.
Questioning?
Yes.
Excuse me, Mayor. How many of those comments actually put their name down on the comment and not just a blanket response?
Every single one of these comments has a name. Yeah, so there's no anonymous comments here. These are all...
Thank you.
...people who owned the comment. Yeah. So, of the 88, 45.4% of those totals, which would be 40 of the 88, were in support of the scramble, and 54.6 were opposed. Relatively, you know, relatively close, actually. And then the next slide's going to just give us some breakdown of these comments, and then kind of where people stand and what they primarily were concerned with. So, as you can see on the slide there, if you look at the left side, it says capacity and delay. That was the highest commented area of concern. And so when you get some comments, a lot of them might talk about multiple things. They might say, you know, I think it's safe, I don't like this, I don't like that. There was a judgment called by staff to determine what was the primary concern of that comment. So we took the main one and marked them as that. But they could have something like, hey, it's, I don't, I oppose it, I don't like it because of this, maybe capacity, or there's too much delay. I also think it could be better if you did layout. That's kind of a side comment, so I just want to be clear how this is all laid out. So, capacity and delay were by far the number one concern of people who either, or for, not for or against it, but certainly as a total. And then of those who oppose, you can see in the second line down, 39 of the comments out of 48, their main concern was, and the reason they didn't like it, was delay or capacity issues. The supporters, although not, you know, was basically the pedestrian use and an increase in just the desire and the ease of use for pedestrians. So there was 13. But they, they were spread pretty evenly realistically beyond that, because they also mentioned safety violation and some other things. And then the other categories, after you get away from the 51.1% for capacity and delay, and then 15.9 for pedestrian use, pretty evenly spread. People made comments about safety, or violations in enforcement, or had recommendations about the layout or education, maybe they need an officer, things like that. So that's where we fell on that. So because the scramble is designed to separate vehicular and pedestrian movements, it's important that users adhere to signal controls, you know, during the test, and turn restrictions during the test and after the test, if, if something was just changed there. And so this graph shows the percentage of peak hour signal cycles. So this is a percentage of the traffic signal cycles, I just want to be clear with that, in the AM, which is shown in the red, and then in the PM peak, which is the white. So if you look on the left-hand side, you'll see the first two graphs, the red and the white. That is basically saying that pedestrians crossed against the signal, so that, obviously, they're not supposed to cross when vehicles move. That's someone making some type of movement in the intersection, apart from their exclusive sign, you know, pedestrian phase. And 25% of the cycles were violated in the AM. That's what that says. And then in the PM, every other cycle, on average, somebody crossed on a don't walk or something. Now, I will say, I don't have a graph for this, but that doesn't mean that they blocked a vehicle. That's just a viol, that's a pure violation. I would say, and I thought about it later, thought it might be a good slide, but we didn't get it in, but I would say that probably 25% of those may impede a vehicle. So you can't take these as, you know, a pedestrian crossed 50% of the time and he continued to block the right turn traffic, because that's just not what this is saying. And then vehicles turning on red, we had 16% of the cycles were violated by a car. That could be more than one during a cycle, but 16% of the time, a car turned on against the signing we have out there, and then 24% during the PM peak. Now, the pedestrian violations, like I said, can affect capacity and delay. However, turning violations don't really affect efficiency. We put those in place mainly for safety. We don't want cars turning on red because this is a new condition. And so we, you know, when pedestrians are crossing in all directions, our drivers and most drivers are not used to looking for those pedestrians coming from other directions. So that's more just about an operation and how people are, are doing that. Of course, obeying those were much greater when the PD was around. I'll just say that. But they weren't always around, yes.
Ian, on that right turn only, on, when you're going north on Monizuma, onto Gurley, is there any chance, or have you looked at the possibility of having peak time right turn only? And then, just like the freeways down in the valley, they have times where all four lanes can be used, or all five lanes can be used, and then only four lanes can be used during three to seven, or, you know, whatever? Because I've sat there at 10 o'clock and said, oh my gosh, there's nobody anywhere, why can't I turn right? So is that something that you've considered?
Yeah, we, you know, thinking through this process and just the, the concern of council and just people in general, that we need to look at this intersection, you know, we're trying this test, but obviously, we're thinking, if this doesn't go well, or if this isn't received, then what other things, what are we learning from this, and what can we implement? And so certainly, you know, signing, time of day signing can be done. In all things, you, you see, we put signs right in people's faces during a test, and they still violate it. So, that's the problem with the signing is, you, we're going to need some enforcement to make that happen. But certainly, I would recommend if we do come off something like this, we've learned some lessons, and we can implement some things that would help there. And I don't have a slide in here as well, but we're, you know, we kind of knew how much, what percentage of traffic was attempting to turn right at the intersection. And it seemed like when we put this in place, there was a latent demand. And what I mean by that is that there was more demand for turning right northbound to eastbound than we were actually getting, because people were being nice, they were being kind, they weren't actually blocking when pedestrians would be walking. And so now that we've got it where, during the exclusive phase, they can turn, we're seeing percentages of right-turning vehicles that are actually higher than before. But again, and, and one other thing that would support something like you're talking about is that this is a location where you only have one lane and the bull bouts. If you install that restriction, it is an inconvenience, because people will have to go north or turn south, but both of those locations have dual lanes. Both northbound Monizuma at Goodwin, it has a right turn pocket, and so does Willis. Willis expands out to... Willis expands out to two lanes just as you get to Willis, and so it's better designed to handle that right turn movement and get them away from there. This is the location where we have that pinch point. But yeah, we're looking at those things and others, we have ideas. So.
Question, Ian. Is there a reason, or maybe I just missed it, that the light, left-hand turn arrow on Goodwin Street was turned off during this exercise? Would that be a fair statement?
We did not, no, I would be, that would be new to me.
It's not working then, I've been through that intersection about twelve different times, so left turn on the Goodwin off of Monizuma does not light?
Is that northbound or southbound?
The southbound.
Yeah, that, we did not change anything.
Might wanna look at that. There was, again, because we've changed that intersection, it tends to put pressure on other intersections.
Yes.
And I recognize that. I think overall, in talking to several officers and several people, you know, anything that's new brings out emotion in people, so I would suggest we change all four of them and have
So now we get into some findings, then we'll look at some graphs. So what has the test shown us? The changeover went well, and I thank the Public Works Signal and Signing Crews for that, that was a seamless kind of changeover, which is something new for us, obviously. The police department's presence and enforcement during the first several days and randomly during the test has been great help in training people, keeping them safe, and that's appreciated very much. One thing that we've learned, given the backups that we continue to experience, because we are, you'll see that in a minute, is that the intersection and the amount of traffic that we have on Gurley and Monizuma, I think no matter what we do, we're not gonna have some level of undesirable backups, we're just not, because we're trying to move too much traffic, not on the laning, but through an intersection, which is the point where, you know, you really see the flaws of all this traffic. And we just don't have enough capacity with the signal.
Ian, I'd like to make a comment on that, too. You know, I've been backed up through Carlton a number of times, and it hasn't been because of the intersection, it's been because of people walking across the crosswalk, it's been because of people backing out of a parking space, and the guy holding up traffic so that he can get into the parking space. And so, you know, backups are just not only exclusively because of the test that we're trying to do.
Yeah, I agree. You see that in some of the filming we did, you can see that when we have some things go on at the intersection. And then lastly, just in general on the findings, the public has been pretty receptive to the city conducting a test of a new traffic measure, and that's irregardless of their opinion. So when we get comments, they're, they don't really attack us for trying it, they might say, hey, good job for trying it, and they'll get rid of it, or, hey, immediately implement it, something like that, but they don't get mad at us for trying, so that's a positive. And so here are the benefits we found from the scramble. Pedestrian use of the exclusive pedestrian phase has been well received. Pedestrians typically experience an equal or shorter wait time compared to the traditional operation when they intend to cross diagonally. That's important, diagonally. We've had no crashes or other, and I'll call it demonstrated repeatable, safety issues at the intersection. You know, we've been very lucky so far, that everyone's making it work. The scramble is effective at reducing pedestrians from blocking right-turning vehicles, it does do that. And it allows traffic to move more freely during the vehicular phases, with the caveat that so long as pedestrians adhere to the indications and don't block. And the separation of vehicle and pedestrian movements also eliminated conflicts between left-turning vehicles and pedestrians. You know, you can, if you're in the left turn pocket on northbound Monizuma or any of these roadways, when you come out, you have a protected left, but then you're allowed to turn, you know, permissively, you can yield. And when you have the traditional operation, obviously you're looking at cars, but you gotta consider the pedestrians. And so this improves that by removing that, and so there's more efficiency in the right and left turns in this, in this system. And then lastly, the scramble can provide an improvement in the traffic flow when the exclusive pedestrian phase is not activated. And then again, that happened thirty-seven percent of the time during the AM, but like I said, that would be similar during non-peak hours, you know, we're looking at AM and PM peak, but certainly if you see that in a peak period, you're gonna see pedestrian omissions during non-peak hours, so the cycle times will be short. So then we look at the opposing side, and we say, the main downside to the scramble has been the continued backup of traffic on Monizuma during the peak hours, specifically the PM. And the trial was primarily, you know, the main purpose was to try to solve some of this, and so in that way, that's not a positive. The separation of the vehicle and pedestrian phases also results in very long cycle times. We talked about that, and I showed you that earlier. So it can create, on average, longer waits for people who come at a regular signal. You might get through quicker, you might not wait as many signals, but sometimes it can be just overall longer. We just give you more time at the back end to clear traffic. The scramble has resulted in more delay on eastbound and westbound Gurley Street and southbound Monizuma Street. We've kinda spread it all around now, that's kinda what's happened. We've kinda gone, we gave timing here to solve this, and it kinda affected the rest. And then the pedestrian violations and the, of the don't walk indications can negate some of the efficiency gained from the exclusive phase. If people continue to do that and block cars, you're really, that's the worst case, because then we've given you more time, and now you're taking it back, you're taking back the gains. And so then, we'll just look at some of these graphs. So there's four of these, the next, all of these describe the level of traffic backup occurring during the peak hours. So you see AM peak and PM peak there, on the various approaches. So the first one we're gonna look at is northbound Monizuma, and the colors represent various lengths of queuing. So it's not representative of the length, it's the percent of traffic that reached a certain backup point. And so blue is less than mid-block, that would be very good, and green is you hit the mid-block point, yellow is greater than mid-block, orange full-block, and the red is you went across the block and you gridlocked something, so that would be across Goodwin, across Cortez, across something, depending on our direction. And these obviously would then correlate to delay. The more you're back, the more cycles it's gonna take. So in this case, we see that northbound Monizuma in the AM is operating very well. Hundred percent of the traffic doesn't even back past mid-block during that hour, so that's very good. And that's due to the lower volumes that we see in the AM over the PM, the number of cycles that are being skipped, and then that increased green time that we gave it to try to make this work. But in the PM, the backup is substantial, even with the time we gave it, we can't seem to move enough cars. Now, this doesn't mean that the signal can't do that, some of that stuff that Councilman was talking about, you know, backups, holding for vehicles, mid-block crossers, all those things are components of this, but primarily it's one lane of traffic, not enough time to get through that signal.
Ian, did you look at this differently for the weekends as opposed to the weekdays?
So all these are based on our worst periods, which are peak hours of like typical days, so that would be like a Monday through a Thursday. So the weekend's gonna be more of an off-peak, except when you get into a special event, and we know what's gonna happen with a special event. If you have, you know, traffic volumes approach the peak volumes, it's gonna be the same. So I kinda consider Saturdays and Sundays as off-peak, except that when you have an event, all, all, all things are out, in my opinion. When you have a big enough event, we're just gonna have to accept that things are gonna be congested and backed up, and I think most people accept that, who live around here, they might be upset about it, but they know that we entertain people here, we have events, and so they'll, they'll deal with that. We primarily, in traffic engineering, look at the worst hours, and so that's what this is. I mean, we could go, gonna be bad about now, it's gonna get bad about two-thirty, and I'll say that, too, our PM peak is not the traditional one that you hear about in cities here. We're talking about like two-thirty to three-thirty, we have a different peak in this town, and so, so that's what I have to say about that. So we had a substantial backup in the PM, fifty percent, we had fifty-three percent reaching the full block or going across the block. I have statistics that I kept regarding whether someone blocked an intersection, I don't present that here. People should not block intersections, but that does happen on occasion as some percent of this forty, that you see the red over there. And then I can quickly go through the others, but they're not as bad, but southbound Monizuma, from our standpoint, has increased, the backup has increased there, as opposed to the conditions before. Morning, it's working okay, you only hit the full block, six cycles, six percent of the cycles, and remember, in an hour, because of the length of these cycles, you're only getting about thirty cycles. So that's like, is that three, something, two, two cycles, three cycles, yes?
Ian, so northbound is flowing quite nicely. Why is there such a difference between northbound and southbound?
So, hold on.
What's the reason for that?
Back to northbound. So northbound flows well in the AM.
Right.
In the PM, it's not doing too good in the, so, and then the next one, you'll see that southbound's not too much worse. I don't know why that is. I know that the traffic, well, I do know the traffic volume on the leg that's north of Gurley has higher volumes than the leg south. So there, it's handling more traffic.
Okay.
So there's actually more volume, actually, north of Gurley, between Gurley and there.
So more opportunity for success if you're going north.
There's more cars on the road in that segment, so that could be why the delays are longer here. But similar thing, we did in the PM on southbound, we actually had a couple instances, six percent of the time we hit full block, and then we blocked across, and that could, I don't tell you where that goes, but that's obviously north of Willis towards Sheldon Street. That's not good when we start backing intersections, so we don't wanna see the red. Eastbound Gurley, I'm gonna turn to that one. Basically, the trends continue, except that here, we have two lanes of traffic to handle this, and so some of this is newer, because now we're filling up two lanes of traffic and, you know, where before, we didn't have these, these full-block backups. In some cases, if you see the PM peak, that's seven and that, that seven percent, some of those were hitting all the way to McCormick during short periods in the afternoon, and that's not because of the construction. I know we have construction going on there, but that's eastbound, going the other way. So these are increases over the normal operation, and they're caused by the over, the longer cycle. And then finally, westbound. Westbound was, we transferred some delay, quite a bit of delay onto westbound Gurley. And so we even had some backups in the AM peak and the PM peak. Ian, did you compare these numbers to prior to the test? Yeah, so I don't have a graph for that, and one of the caveats, and I'll go over it in a minute, is that I would, I would say that we've gone up, and we did take some data from that. We've gone up, what does that mean? Yeah, we, we've, we're filling the block up more on Gurley Street and southbound, we know that. I don't have a graph to compare those, but one of the things that has changed is that I actually did, we implemented signal timing improvements that didn't occur in the pre-test condition, and the pre-test condition also included that we recalled PEDs every cycle, so it's not a true fair comparison, and we've still seen some increase. It's not a huge increase, but we're seeing a reduction or an increase in delay on Gurley in both directions, and an increase in delay on southbound over the pre-test condition, and that pre-test condition is not apples to apples. Does that make sense? And so you'll see some consideration chart, little thing here in a minute, and that's one of the things I'll say, is that if you wanna really see how this compares, it would be very good to, if it wasn't put in place for whatever reason, if it comes off, you should leave some of these improvements in place and leave that recall off, and then let's get some, let's see what it does to the normal operation, because I think there's some efficiencies that have been gained.
Do you feel that pedestrians are safer in a perfect world with this scramble? Keeping pedestrians away from traffic and traffic away from pedestrians?
So, I was concerned about the safety of pedestrians, especially in the test condition. I think that that location lends itself to the use of something like this, an exclusive phase, if you had all the indications in place so that they can clearly see that we have walk symbols up for them, and we have additional striping and signing and push buttons that are audible, and all the things that we would do if we made this a permanent installation. I don't feel that it's inherently unsafe, and it probably would do some, have some improvements to pedestrian safety, because you kind of eliminate what we call the right hook problem, right-turning vehicles not looking for the pedestrian, and then we would eliminate the left and pedestrian conflict. A lot of times, those people are so worried about finding that gap in the vehicles that they're not paying attention to the crossing pedestrians. So certainly, I think it's, it's recommended for places where pedestrian safety and numbers are large and, or you have an issue. So, yeah, I would think that it would improve pedestrian safety. And that's really what it was designed for. We have low, I mean, I don't go into this, but we have very low pedestrian volumes for a trial of this sort. This is, this was, this is not typically used in the kind of numbers we have, and I know we think we have high numbers, but these are not high pedestrian numbers, if, when you're talking about pedestrians. Most places who set up warrants for this talk about equal numbers of cars and pedestrians when you consider something like this, and that would mean twenty thousand pedestrians a day, I mean, something really huge. So, let's see. So, considerations. Based on the results, council may want to consider the following, just moving forward. So here's, conduct a comparison of the scramble operation against the traditional intersection operation with the removal of the pedestrian recall and the timing signal changes that we made. And that would really give you which one is more efficient from just a vehicular, you know, standpoint. Two, as stated at the beginning, and I think I've said this multiple times, I think no measure that you use here is gonna magic pill solve the congestion issue that we have, because we still allow people to park, we have all these people who come here, so we're just not gonna get rid of some queuing and delay. We will, we'll do everything we can to improve it, but we're not gonna get rid of it. And finally, if a scramble system is implemented, I went over most of those just a minute ago, but additional measures would be recommended and should be installed, including audible push buttons, more user-friendly locations for the buttons, enhanced signing, all the things that would make it so that people don't cross under confusion, because people are not accustomed to this type of use. And so, you know, as we watch people, they just, they don't understand what's going on, and they fall back to, I cross with traffic, and that's really gonna not work here, and we don't want that, that's not safe. So, that's all I had today, and so if you have any additional questions or comments.
Let's see, Councilman Good?
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of thoughts, I've been out there at that intersection different times of the day, on the weekends, mornings, evenings, and it's a confusing process, particularly for visitors, and I think eighty-eight responses that you monitored is so far inadequate to really project from that, when you're talking about literally thousands of pedestrians crossing to try to draw conclusions based upon eighty-eight submissions is, is just not adequate. But that really comes down to, I think, when you look at the numbers, mostly probably local people who are driving and not walking in those, in that intersection, so that's why they're primarily concerned with the delay issue. When I found the problem areas that I observed, it was usually somebody violating the crossing rules. Impatient, wanted to get across, didn't wanna wait, and just decided to go. That caused some problems. I think a lot of people liked the diagonal option, when they were gonna try to get to that far corner, not having to wait for two cycles of green lights on the traditional traffic. But I think concluding, you know, the proposal to look at this and you know, the proposal to, to look at this and see if it really would solve the problem, I, I was expecting in order to draw an effective decision long-term to change it, we would have to have some pretty solid overwhelming approval. And I just don't see this happening. We could tweak it a little bit. We could, um, change the, uh, timing cycles a little bit. Uh, we could do more signage. Uh, but I don't think it's really gonna end up being a, um, a, a long-term solution. Um, we just have more and more traffic there. And if people follow the rules, then things work. But that's the problem. A lot of people just won't follow the rules. And that's just the nature of things. One of the things I did observe multiple times is when we were not doing parking enforcement with those extended bed pickup trucks on Gurley. Uh, and that would cause a delay in and of themselves, because traffic couldn't get by in that number two lane. And then it would push traffic into the preceding intersection. And I'm sure drivers then would blame the scramble and not the fact that they couldn't get around, um, some of these bigger trucks. So, uh, I think, again, we need to emphasize the enforcement of those parking restrictions for extended bed trucks. And, uh, that might be a more effective way of moving traffic through that intersection than the scramble. So, uh, I think from what I've seen so far, um, I don't see this as a really effective, cost-effective solution. It may end up causing more problems than we tried to solve in the first place. So, at this point, I, I'd say thanks for the attempt. We, uh, we tried something relatively inexpensive to, um, look at and, uh, it just doesn't seem to be an effective solution, in my opinion. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Blair?
Well, unlike Phil, I don't think we've given this fair due. I've been down there like him as well. And I see, the reason why we're doing this is to protect the walking public and not necessarily the motoring public. You know, we all know how to drive our vehicles. And what I do is I drive around the square, not through the square. So there's decisions people make with their everyday driving habits based upon the conditions of the road and what we're trying to achieve. What we haven't achieved is exactly what number four says, full implementation, additional signage, uh, striping. How can you make a determination when you have a half-baked system out there in the first place? We need to make an overall change to protect the pedestrians. The pedestrians are not gonna go away. But I can certainly tell you, if I want to get around the Courthouse Plaza in a vehicle, I can do that. But pedestrians cannot. So what is more safety in my mind is the pedestrian, the walking pedestrians. We have a jammed-up downtown, especially on holiday weekends and, you know, God, Mother Nature and Christmas pie. And we're having, you know, Akronite and everything else. Okay, we can close it down for a night, but when you go back to reality, every weekend in the summertime, we got a problem. And people need to just learn how to drive around the problem. And we need to protect the public, period, and put in the beeping signs and the talking, uh, walks, so people hear it, understand it, the striping in the intersection, and not just do a half-baked job of, of reeducating the people. So I support it.
Councilman Siski?
Thank you. I would agree with Councilman Blair. I think that if we cut this off right now, we're throwing the baby out with the bathwater. To me, separating pedestrians from traffic and traffic from pedestrians is extremely important. And I think that that would be a, a, um, end game that I would absolutely buy into. I think that, like Steve said, people, and locals in particular can get around downtown. And so you just have to think a little ahead before you do, before you head downtown and think, where, where do I want to go? And so, um, I definitely think, you know, the public's always asking for more time for us to consider things. And I think that that's a valid concern. And I think that in this case, that's what we need. We need more time to consider this, uh, under better conditions, more striping, things that, that actually will make this or help this work.
Mayor Potem?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I, I agree with, um, Councilman Blair and, and Councilman Siski regarding more time. My husband and I were down and, and he's not often downtown like I am, but he was very confused about when do we walk, when we don't walk, because he's wa, watching the lights. And the lights aren't going to do it. So it, it's, it's making sure that our folks understand when they're supposed to walk and when they're not supposed to walk. I think getting those diagonal crosswalks in and, and getting the audible walk, walk, don't walk. I think that will help tremendously. But, and, and Ian, isn't there something that we face to the public so they really, they know, so they stop looking at the light and they look at the, the little man that's saying, stop or walk or whatever?
Yeah. So, so what we're missing is, um, right now, you know, we have two indications that are intended to go 90 degrees. And we've kind of skewed those.
Yeah.
Normally you'd have those plus a 45-degree one that would directly face you. And of course, you'd have the full striping and all that stuff. So that's the challenge, is that people are still looking at that. Um, yeah, so I agree with some of those comments. But it was a trial, so you don't know, you know, we didn't want to go all out and spend all that money on a trial.
Until we go out and do it the right way, we really cannot judge whether or not this is working, uh, correctly. And, and, you know, I know we haven't had pedestrian accidents at that particular intersection, but we had two elderly, elderly women that were hit at Cortez and, and Gurley. And so I think we, we absolutely need to protect our pedestrians. And so if this would help with that, I, I would say, let's, let's go in and let's do it the right way. If we really want to try it.
Councilman Larsson?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I like the word trial because that's exactly what it is, but a trial has to be full-faced. I kind of like to think everybody running through the intersection because they're so happy to get to work. That's, that's my thought process.
Your shot.
Well, of course. But I think the timing of the trial has to be real. Uh, if we're talking about pedestrians, remember, we're a tourist-oriented community, one of we most tourist-laden, and it's not necessarily in the middle, middle of the winter. Um, I really think that we need to, uh, take a look at this when we have thousands of people here during our busiest times, because it isn't just about the pedestrians here in Prescott, Arizona. It's about all the people that come here and visit.
All right. Any other questions, comments from the council? Uh, any public comment coming in?
I have two speaker cards. Bill Finelli?
Hi, I'm Bill Finelli. I head up our pedestrian, bike and traffic advisory committee. So, we didn't, our last meeting was a week ago for Monday, so we didn't see Ian's slides on the traffic counts. But from a big picture standpoint, we actually, as a, a committee, voted to recommend continuing with it with really four items that you guys have already spoken about. One are those, um, the, the beacons actually pointing at you when you're trying to cross, having the push buttons at the end of the islands, so you can actually, instead of having to walk backwards, you walk up there, you push it, you see it, and then you hear it with the audible thing, and then you see the striping. So with those four changes, hopefully, the pedestrians will use it properly and use it the right way. I've been there myself a couple times. I get confused every time. I still go there, because you can't quite, if the sun's not shining the right way, can't exactly see what's going on. This test was done to try to improve traffic situations. And we also agreed it didn't really improve the traffic. It juggled it around a little bit. But we saw that the improvement to pedestrian safety was so important and, and so helpful that we figured, as of right now, it would make sense to go ahead and continue with that. When the new hotel opens up, a lot of traffic's gonna be going right to that section and making that nice diagonal to the square will be perfect for folks, too. So that's where we ended up. Thanks.
Thank you.
Tom Rusing?
Uh, good afternoon. Um, I appreciated the, uh, presentation. Uh, I kind of agree with number one up there. And that was my concern early on. Did we do, and it went along with the mayor's comment, did we do an adequate pre-test evaluation? I didn't see bar graphs that compared pre, uh, scramble to the scramble, uh, improvements. And to me, that's the whole thing. I agree that to do it right, we need to do some of these things and maybe extend it. But to me, as kind of a scientist, I'm always looking at comparing before and after treatment or before and after the change. And that, uh, maybe Ian has that data. I, maybe I missed it, but I don't think I saw that. For me to make a decision or a, a comment would be to be able to look at that. What, what have we really done? Not, not people's comments, because I think that's, I'm not sure how accurate that is, and the numbers were small. So to me, to really make a fair assessment of this, one, I think you would have to do it in the right way. But two is to have good data beforehand and then good data afterwards, because the real driving force of this, as somebody mentioned, was traffic backup. Uh, I think pedestrian safety is key, but that was a reason for the test. It wasn't pedestrian, uh, safety anyway. So that's my thought.
Thank you, Tom.
Peter Kropnik?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Uh, I agree that, at least in my mind, pedestrian safety is number one. And I'd like to see this, uh, program expanded. And in particular, what I want to call to your attention is a new traffic light at Willow Lake Road, Prescott Lakes Parkway, near the basis school there. We have a new traffic light that was just installed there, uh, controlling, but there is no accommodation for pedestrians whatsoever in the light or the striping sequence. There is a bike lane there and there's a, uh, what's it called? Janelfano Trail on South Willow Lake Road. There's no way to connect those. I go through that all the time on my bike and you take your life in your hand, because what the traffic light has done is bunch the traffic so that there's no, no spaces between it.
Thank you.
That was the last speaker card.
Ian, how much would it cost to do full implementation on the intersection?
Sorry, I had extra slides. So, yeah, I bring that out when you ask. So, estimate 15 to 20,000. Um, some part of that cost, though, is the, um, upgrade to the audible push buttons. So that cost wouldn't be wasted specifically, because we've, we've wanted to do that kind of improvement downtown anyways for, uh, our blind users. And so that would include audible push buttons, crosswalk, uh, permanent signing, crosswalk, you know, cross only on walk sign, no turn on red, permanent installation, uh, enhanced stripe, diagonal crosswalk, the diagonal pedestrian traffic signal indications at each corner. And then that's, and then I note that there's push buttons. So that would be new push buttons as you approach. Um, right now, you know, you walk out onto the pavers, but the push button's behind you in the, in the corner. And so we really feel like you need to have the little short push buttons out where people actually wait. And so that would include four, or eight of, eight of those. Um, and then we did, I have been researching, um, infrared, infrared detection for pedestrians, because we may be able to get away from the actual push buttons and go with an automated, uh, detection of pedestrians. And then it would in, tie into the audibles and automatically, so when you come up, it just automatically tells you to wait. And then it would automatically tell you to cross when it's time.
Wouldn't even have to push a button.
That cost is not included in there. I don't have those costs back, but that's, they do that in, um, some other states in the West here.
Well, it appears to me this is kind of a zero-sum game that in terms of vehicular traffic, we haven't really improved it a whole lot. We're kind of where we were. Uh, we didn't see that actual data, but just from what you're saying. And from what I experienced as well, I see that backup on the northbound Monizuma in our rush hour. Thank you, Mile High Middle School. So, you know, if, if this is kind of same, same, but we're gaining pedestrian safety, uh, and it's a pretty low bar to me, uh, for the amount of money you're spending, it's hard to attach that to someone's life or being injured in a vehicle pedestrian accident. Uh, it appears to me I would agree with my council members that want to move forward and fully do this. And I would just encourage you to keep tweaking the system, uh, to improve the vehicular traffic, particularly northbound Monizuma during our, uh, so-called rush hour. Uh, and I think that's kind of what you're hearing from the council here today. Councilman Good?
Yeah, Mayor, I wouldn't object to do, to extending that and making the trial a little more realistic. And, um, those cost estimates are pretty minor. It's almost like my, uh, wife's deductible for a medical plan.
There you go. To my, yeah, to my point.
Right. So, I, I wouldn't have an objection. Thanks.
Councilman Lamerson?
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with you 100%. If you want to encourage people to get out of their cars, you gotta make it safer to walk. All right? And, uh, part, part of the general plan had to do with multimodal, which included all kinds of transportation, not just vehicles. So, thank you.
Mayor Potem?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh, Ian, yeah, I go back to where we started with some of these things about four or five months ago, talking about parking. I, I think a lot of the backup on all of that, we're waiting for people to pull out of their parking spot. And then we get out even waiting for a parking spot. I've seen people do that. I've found it myself. And, um, so I just think if we can combine the parking, I don't think we can just do that and not move ahead with other things. I think the parking is, is an issue. And I know the, the pedestrian parking, not parking, sorry, pedestrian bicycle traffic committee could possibly also take a look at the parking. They've kind of agreed to do that. And, and, uh, so I think this is part of it, because it does really slow down traffic. We also had a suggestion from, uh, Matt Bressard, who's with Matt Saloon and is on our Prescott Downtown Partnership. He thought that possibly the, the Sam Steiger crosswalk, because people cross all the time in there and no matter what's happening, cars have to stop. So if you could coordinate some type of a, a don't walk on that crosswalk when Monizuma is moving, that might help keep Monizuma moving. Just a suggestion, if we could look at that.
Councilman Blair?
Well, just to suggest, in 1970s, when my mom would drive around the block to try to find a parking place in front of Penny's, uh, we still have that same problem. But, but, you know, we have talked as a council about moving with the Whiskey Row Alley and, and doing more of an education about our parking garage. And the more we do that and the more that becomes successful, the more apparent that the pedestrian safely, the safety at that intersection will be, as well as a new hotel being built. So I think we just give it more time.
Ian, it looks like you have your direction here?
Thank you.
All right. Thanks for the presentation. Uh, item 3C, please.
Presentation or review, public comment related to the proposed 2019 water policy.
Mr. Halsted, how much, uh, time do you need for a presentation today?
Not very much. I think we have a total of 10 slides.
Okay. I'm just trying to judge here. We've got about 30 minutes before our next meeting. Uh, I'm anxious to hear what the public has to say. It seems like we've got a crowd here today. So, uh, yeah, if you can slip through this as best you can, then I'll probably get to public comment first.
Okay. Well, I guess I'm gonna start at the beginning. Uh, back in the early 18, no, I'm not gonna do that. We are here again to review public comments. We've done this once before, um, based on input from you all, the council. We had some public open houses. This is to rehash all of the public comments and the input we see, received at those open houses, along with, um, some changes we've made to the policy based on public comment, council comment, uh, good ideas, et cetera. So we had those four public meetings. They're on the, September the 4th, 9th, 11th, and 17th. We had two around lunchtime. We had two in the evening. We had them at, at various locations all over the city to kind of gather as many people as we could. And for an overview of our success, uh, Leah Hubbard?
Hello? So we had approximately 80 to 100 participants in these public meetings. We had additional participants in that month's drop-by-drop where we discussed policy. So we've discussed policy a few different times in a few different arenas. We had, when we created this PowerPoint, 26 online submissions. We have now received about 28 online submissions through the water dot policy email address. And within those 26 to 28, we've received over 110 questions. And all of those questions slash comments have been kind of filtered into an Excel sort of table and is on our website. So if you want to read through them, we did not disclude any of them. We put all of them on the website. So I put this together of just kind of a topic breakdown so that we could see. And I apologize if this is a little bit small for some of the members of the audience. Um, but the primary things that were mentioned were, the first one was conservation. They were, um, good, good conversations about, you know, they're happy with the land development code changes we are presenting, with the rebate program changes that we did in July, and they support the conservation measures of the city of Prescott. The second was Safield. Safield and regional cooperation is a big topic that has been discussed and that you've seen it a lot. Um, and a lot of people are focused on that. And the third most talked about was that people feel like this had maybe, maybe was a little bit rushed and maybe we should delay it a little bit. I don't think a lot of people knew we've been discussing this at study session for quite some time. And so if you are just getting introduced to it, it And so if you are just getting introduced to it, it does feel like it may be a little bit rushed. And then, as you can see, a lot of different topics have come up. A lot of people have mentioned it in various capacities. The aquifer return flows and different things like that have come up pretty consistently. And like I said, this is all on the website if you'd like to look at it.
I'll try to, I'll try to learn from her example, but I can't promise anything. So with regard to those comments, some of the things that people were concerned about was that rush of policy. We received a lot of those comments in the beginning. We haven't received very many of those recently, because this is our 12th public meeting on this, these topics. People had concerns about serving water outside of city limits. They wanted to see us make more effort towards safe yield and regional cooperation. People were concerned about increased groundwater use, about the administrative approval level, about our recharge levels. Specifically, are we requiring enough return flows to our system for new projects? And people were very concerned about the costs involved with expanding our sewer system. We didn't just have comments opposing our policy, we also had quite a few supporting them. So some of the things that people supported were our consecration code and new incentives. Those, of course, were adopted this last June. They're in place currently. We've had quite a bit of success in publicizing those and getting those incentives out to people. Adoption of a low water use plant list, the one that's promulgated by the Department of Water Resources, rather than making you all determine if a plant is low water use or not. Well abandonment has been a popular issue. We've had several comments in support of serving water outside of city limits as well. Nothing has gone purely one way. We've had a lot of people in support of expanding our sewer service, with the caveat, of course, of the costs, and people are generally in support of improving the watershed. I don't think we got any comments saying they wanted to make the watershed worse. So that's good. Now, some of the larger topics involved with our water policy changes didn't receive really any comments for or against whatsoever. One of the major ones is use of the WORM, the Water Resources Management Model, that is going to shift the way we track and manage our water from purely pen and paper, Excel spreadsheets, into a model so we can determine where we're going with water, what kind of water we need. People also didn't really seem too concerned about simplifying our water connection process, about making that easier, saving staff time, cutting down on some red tape and bureaucracy. We didn't really receive any comments at all about our fire protection fee or the city not using annual allocations anymore. Of course, annual allocations has led to some problems in the past. Based on the input we received, we decided to suggest some changes to the proposed policy from the outset. So the first thing that we suggested is that we increase our return flows from 50% as we initially proposed to 60%. Now, the 50% was just a straight holdover from our old policy that we were just going to codify. When one gentleman commented on our return flow requirement, thought it could be higher, we looked at where that came from, and we agreed with him. The way that we adopted 50% in the first place was that was our overall system average for return flows. So we didn't want it to be less than that overall average. Our overall average has increased since we first adopted that, so we're going to increase that to approximately our overall average now. As that average increases, we can continue to increase that return flow requirement in the future.
Question real quick, Mayor. I know you want to get through this, but based upon a new development, say like out at the Dells, we're not receiving 60%, we're receiving close to 90%. Because you talk about an average, I think it's a fair comment to make, that people know that these new annexations and these new developments that are conservation developments that have drought tolerant plants, those types of things, and also side watering ideas that are better than they were in the past with all your appliances, we're receiving around 90% return flow back to our plant.
For most residences, that's correct. We receive about 90% of the water we give them. For Granite Dells specifically, that may not be quite that amount, because they're still in the phase of establishing their landscaping, so it may require a little more water at the outset, and we'll see that number kind of come closer to the city average or be better than in the future.
And I think the reason why I bring that up is when you start talking about what we're here for is changing the water policy and the model, that is associated with new growth into the future that we anticipated in the general plan, and those amounts that we're bringing back are more closer to 80, 90% than they are 50 to 60%.
That's correct.
So Clyde, we're not limiting ourselves to 60%, right?
No, this is the low average. It's the very bottom of the barrel. So nothing can be less than 60%. We assume most things will be much, much higher.
Mayor Potem?
Thank you, and I think this is a really good point, because a lot of the things about this water policy is education. And so we need to educate our folks to know the minimum is 60%, but many of our places are providing much higher than that, up to 90%. And that's pretty significant.
The vast majority provide more return flows than 60%.
Thank you.
Now, an additional area was our administrative approval level. We initially proposed it be at five acre feet. Based on comments from you all and the public, we're going to reduce that down to two acre feet. Right now, the administrative approval level is around one acre foot. So this would increase that slightly to cut down on a little bit of staff time and the amount of time that we have to come before the council. But it wouldn't allow so many and such large projects that people would be upset, that they would feel like the public wasn't having the same input. Even those administratively approved projects would still come to the Water Issues Subcommittee for a presentation of, hey, these are the projects where administratively approved the same way we do it now.
And I think that just bears saying again, because of the misinformation that's out there, Clyde, that everything will still come to council. I mean, it goes to the council, the water subcommittee, but all of these projects still go through, they're previewed by PNC and come to council.
They will all go through the same planning and zoning process, all of the same other processes. The administratively approved projects, of course, will be approved administratively. They won't come to the council. They will still go to the Water Issues Subcommittee.
Okay.
Which is the way we do things now, more or less.
Thank you.
Another change was we modified the expansion zone map. Previously, we used the general plan as a baseline. The general plan has been altered in a couple different ways. Some people pointed those out to us during the public comment period, so we've made modifications based on those comments. We're also including a restriction on the use of gray water. Previously, we haven't had any real restrictions on gray water use. We didn't permit it. We didn't supervise it. But because the return flows are such an important source of water, and they're so important for our aquifer, we're going to cut down on the number of people that can use gray water when they are connected to our sewer system.
I have a question.
Sure.
Sorry. These things come up as I'm thinking. I've been asked numerous times. I guess I don't have a clear response to it, is the fact that if I own a piece of property in the city of Prescott, by the way, that was given water based upon the water policy, and I do not have sewer in that area, but I have water. Are we going to be able to allow that person to hook up the water as long as that person has a bona fide septic system or alternative system recognized by the state of Arizona?
I'm getting real close to that. You're getting ahead of me. I think three more. So yes. Well, gray water, we're also going to restrict new golf courses. It's been in our general plan for some time that we don't allow new golf courses. We can put that into code as well. It's not a big change. We have added a washing machine to the incentive program. I understand we've awarded a few of those already, so it has been somewhat successful in allowing us to conserve a little more. Councilman Blair, we've also added an exemption for sewer connections. Currently, under our water policy, if it's new construction, you've got to connect a sewer, no matter how close or far you are from the sewer trunk, the main line. We've added actually two exemptions, one that's automatic based on distance, one that is discretionary and up to the city council when the circumstance is appropriate, when you all determine it's right.
I appreciate that, because we don't live in a flat area like Prescott Valley with new sewer systems everywhere. We live in a meets and bounds area where we have county islands everywhere, but we have city water and city lots that don't have the ability to have a sewer system. So it becomes cost prohibitive for somebody to use their property that is intended for their homes. So I think that's a good change, so thank you.
And then the final change is that any water we serve outside of city limits will be subject to the Proposition 400 requirements. So the requirements that are in our charter that require permanent recharge, supermajority of the council to approve those projects, and a certain amount of public input period. We've said for quite some time that getting around Proposition 400 wasn't an intent of this, using the recharge from that property or outside of city limits wasn't part of the intent of these policy changes. To ensure that that's the case, we will add those to code as well. So you'll see that, that too.
So where do we go from here? So if we've, as we've discussed in regards to the sewer system, then over the next year, we're going to continue looking at how can we increase sewer connections? Where is it possible? So we'll study the possibilities of, from the existing system, where we can expand it into other neighborhoods. We'll come forward with recommendations, identify funding opportunities on how it can be achieved through all sorts of funding sources, whether it's bonds, whether it's WIFA loans, whether the city subsidizes, improvement districts, all aspects will be looked at and discussed throughout the next year, you know, in public meetings, public forums for that. We'll go forward using the Water Resource Management to specifically look at exactly how much water is being used and not assorted, not associated with, identify just numbers put to parcels, like in the past, .35 acre feet per residential. It will be actual numbers from the model. Continue on to conservation efforts, and even try to expand conservation efforts in regards to public knowledge of those efforts and the rebate program, as well as engaging in regional cooperation with, with all entities, municipalities in the area, Prescott, Prescott Valley, Chino Valley, Dewey, Humboldt, Yavapai County, and try to engage everyone in that effort.
I appreciate that, Craig. On point number one, we will do a mayor's commission on wastewater and study all these areas with the appropriate folks at the table to figure out what those priorities are. And regarding your last bullet, I'm pleased to announce that on November 14th, we will convene a public meeting for a water summit, and we'll put that out, of course, in media release, but we are convening all the different entities together to talk about safe yield.
So next steps, we're here on October 22nd. We're considering then November 12th, the next council meeting, to bring forward the proposed changes with all of the new changes from public comment back in front of all of you on that November 12th meeting for consideration of adoption of those code and policy changes. With that, any other questions that you have?
Thank you. Well, appreciate you guys pushing through that. I'd like to get to public comment if my members would oblige, and then we can comment after that. So I'd like to get to that, and we may go a little over 3:00, and that's okay. But let's go to public comment.
Mayor, we have seven speaker cards?
Okay.
First person is Colin Lovedoll.
Just so we can get through these, make sure you watch your time there. Everybody has three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. I work for Sun State Builders. We are the primary builder for Chamberlain Development, a lot of the new work going on, and we just wanted a chance to express our appreciation for some of the things that have been done here, and the fact that these, I didn't mean to use the word fact twice, but the information that we're now establishing policy on is fact. It's not just random sampling or choosing different sampling, and so we appreciate that. And the Water Resource Management Model, the fact that that will be tracking actual current use and not just, again, rather well-chosen samples that some choose to look at. The other thing is, in regards to water allocations, getting rid of looking at it from that regard, which tends to create fear as a builder, we are trying to enhance commercial properties, commercial construction in this area, and we appreciate that that'll help with the mindset for people that are coming here for that, again, being more fact-based. In regards to the sewer and recharge, I can tell you that in the last couple of phases of work we've done, in work with the city, with the, with the members of Public Works, et cetera, we are actually already beginning to install metering systems to track the discharge from the housing developments so that we will have accurate documentation of exactly what is happening there, which we think will be beneficial to proving out exactly what's being requested here. Yeah, just, just really want to compliment the city on how well we think this has been thought out, and we're looking forward to going through with it.
Thank you.
Leslie Hoy?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I am here today as an official representative of the Citizens Water Advocacy Group, known popularly as CWAG. While the governmental entities in the Prescott Active Management Area tend to focus on providing water for growth, CWAG's major concerns are a sustainable water future for the Active Management Area and protection of the Upper Verde River. To achieve these goals, we must find common ground. We make the following statements in that context. Sewer policy, CWAG supports the concept of connecting septic systems to the sewer system and agrees additional study is needed to develop a policy. Water conservation, CWAG recommends immediate council approval of the proposed conservation policies, which apparently a lot of them have been already approved. We also recommend that the city develop a long-range conservation plan with citizen input and with milestones and periodic evaluations leading to a numerical goal. The landscape policy was briefly mentioned today. We support that. For the water administration, we had hoped to keep it at one acre foot, but we can live with two. The main thing we have a concern about is the water distribution outside the city. And can I ask a quick question about that? Is that going to be included in the vote on November 12th? It is, okay. CWAG recommends that this policy be tabled for additional study. This proposal presents a, represents a profound change in city policy with tremendous implications for our future, so additional public hearings are needed. The city should prepare a clear written policy that includes a statement of need, a rationale, and an analysis of the future effects on population, quality of life, stakeholder impacts, neighboring communities, and safe yield. Additionally, the city must prove that allocating the groundwater allowance to new development is consistent with the intent of the 1980 Arizona Groundwater Management Act and with the management goal for the Prescott Active Management Area. And I'd like to ask another quick question about that. We understood that the city had requested something in writing from ADWR saying that it was permissible to reinterpret the groundwater allowance, which in 19, well, in 1999, their declaration that we were out of safe yield, was stated that no more water was to go to subdivisions other than what were plotted pre-1999. Maybe somebody would like to answer the question whether you've received something in writing from ADWR?
Thank you, Leslie.
I guess not. Thanks.
Phil Feldmayer?
Hold on a second. I got a text from Bill Feldmayer.
Okay.
So I'm going to speak on his behalf. He said, "I was at the council meeting to discuss your new water policy. However, your agenda ran long, and I am unable to stay. If you can, please convey to the other council members, I am in support of this new policy."
Jerry Smith Fornera?
I really am not going to say anything any more than what CWAG has said. And you do need to get some answers on the fact that things were set up so you wouldn't have endless developments here. I don't care if you were born here. I came here when I was two months old. Some of you've only been here seven years, and some of you've been here 40, but you don't seem to understand the water here, none of you, none of you, except for maybe Jim. And you really need to start thinking, because I have never seen anything like this. Your planning and zoning just zones in more development, and you aren't thinking.
Thank you.
Chris Harrison?
Mayor, Council, my name is Chris Harrison. I'm with Dorn Homes here in Prescott.
Mayor, Council, my name is Chris Harrison, I'm with Dorn Homes here in Prescott. We're responsible for building a lot of the new homes here, and one of the major tenants of our, our company is that we, we have organic homes, so we incorporate energy conservation, quality, air quality, and then water conservation as well. We're proud of the contribution that we're making. Our water conservation system in all of our houses include many of the components of the Waters, EPA WaterSense Program, low-flow toilets, faucets, recirculating water pump, and then we have incorporated water cisterns in our project in, in Saddlewood. We're really proud of that, and in addition to that, using drought-tolerant plants in all of our communities, so we applaud the efforts and we take a great responsibility in the conservation efforts that we do, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Peter Krupnick.
Mayor, Council, I would just like to reinforce a previous SEWAG presentation and ask that the decision on the allocation of water from the Groundwater Management Act be deferred in the November council meeting until we get some input from ADWR and clarification on, on the legality of that.
Howard Mechanic.
Mayor and Council, I appreciate some of the changes that were made here since the last time. It's made the proposal better. As you know, I supported the basic thrust of this proposal with one concern, that we want to make, take our best efforts to lead this AMA to safe yield. And I appreciate the mayor inviting the other parties to get together. What we need to ask these parties, are they willing to share in cost? And what I'm suggesting, we have 10,000 acre feet that we're talking about here, that's basically new water, we didn't plan on using 10,000 acre feet. Let's plan on using 5,000 of that right now and hold that other 5,000 back for a while to get the other parties on board, to share in the cost of those 5,000 acre feet. With the 5,000 acre feet that we use, if we get five homes per acre foot, that will provide for 25,000 new homes. I think that's enough for the next few years. I think it's more than enough, I don't think anybody here is going to think we need to allocate 25,000 homes in the next few years, and even if you don't purposely set aside the other 5,000, you're not going to use it. But let's ask the other parties to get together and share in the cost, and the cost will be much less for that water than water in five or 10 years. Just think about it. The, the next water we find, if, if we find this other water somewhere to go to safe yield, to go to replenishment district, how much is that going to cost compared to the cost of this water? What is the cost of this water? We don't have to sell that at cost to the other parties in the AMA, we can consider the value also. The cost is basically near zero, but let's get them to share in the cost to reach safe We, I know you're concerned about unintended consequences on some of your actions. I think you know what the consequence will be if the AMA doesn't work and agree to reach safe yield, and we use all 10,000 acre feet. That increases the overdraft, probably 9,000 acre feet if you apply some of it to exempt wells and relieve that part, but 9,000 of that 10,000 you're going to use is going to increase the overdraft over 50%. It's a bad situation, that will happen, and you're going to have that as a possible result here. And if that was the only result we were looking at, this would be a disaster. So I appreciate if you go ahead and, and take your best efforts, and I would, as I said before, if, if before the mayor meets with these other people, if the council can get on board and walk into that meeting so we have a sense of what the community wants ahead of time, I think the mayor would be in a better position. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tom Atkins.
Good afternoon, I'm Tom Atkins, I live on 309 South Washington Avenue in Prescott. And I, I want to talk about Prescott's water reality versus Prescott's water mythology. Prescott's water comes from mainly six wells in Chino Valley, it's under Chino Valley, and the water reality is that this water level in Chino Valley is dropping a foot and a half a year. So no matter what the paper water fantasy that we are using to make our decisions, the fact is, the water levels are dropping in every one of our wells. There may be a little pop-up once in a while, but mainly they're all going down. This is a picture of a well that is a monitoring well that is near our, our production wells in, in Chino Valley. It's going down, foot and a half a year. No matter what you say about renewable water, how much water you can send back to the, to the sewage plant, what you do with that water, the, the recharge basin at the airport, takes, we're, we're putting that on the ledger right now, is water available to us? It takes 80, 90, 100 years, maybe 500 years for that water to reach where we're pumping it out. We save water, you're, you're, you have done a good job having people save water. Our, our water consumption now is much lower than it used to be, but all you do is say, "Oh, we can build more houses. We can, we can make more developments happen." The water level is going down, that's the water reality, foot and a half a year. Nothing you say is going to change that, and it's going to only increase the rate at which we use our water. Our mayor has said, "There's plenty of water down there." There isn't. There isn't plenty of water down there for development. It just ain't there. We're not going to reach safe yield with our current situation that we're working on right now. I need, I think you need to have a major change in the way you think about things, because you're making the wrong decisions based upon the real water reality, not the moving paper water myth that we're dealing with. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tom Rusing.
Tom Rusing, 2194 Forest Mountain Road. So I agree with many of the comments that were made, I think that, let me go through several things. One, I think a lot of us were concerned, and we heard because of the campaign, a lot from the public, and there was a lot of concern on the public about the process of how this water policy was put forward, and the public perception was that it was being rushed through, and that there was initially poor public education and input. The open houses, I attended several of those, were not well-designed, they frustrated the public, there were no real presentation of the policy at those events, and when questioned, and they were, people were directed just to the tables, and there wasn't a group question and answer so that all the people could hear what other citizens, what their concerns were. It took a revolt by the audience several times to actually get that happen, and that was actually fairly productive. I think public input has obviously helped, and it's made some identified issues, and some changes were made, and hopefully avoided unintended consequences. I agree with Leslie Hoy and SEWAG, and I would echo their concern and their recommendation that at least the water portion of the policy be tabled till we have more public education and input, and I will just echo the other thing, that I think regional cooperation is essential here. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Tana Karen.
Morning, afternoon, Council and Mayor. My name is Tana Karen, and I have five points. The, I would echo Tom Rusing in saying that the graphs at the four meetings were absolutely useless. I'm very well-versed in the water policy, in the, you know, going out and measuring everything else and looking at those graphs. If I wasn't skeptical, I would say they were more to confuse the public than to inform the public, but I'm not a skeptic, so I won't claim that. We are worried about these wells, and yet it will cost, we know, hundreds of millions of dollars to get all these wells on recharge. Then why are we looking at doing this humongous expansion area into Chino Valley, into Prescott Valley, which will allow us to do 50% more development, which will mean 50% more water use? We're not conserving water. The public is not conserving water only to lower their tax bill, or their, their water bills. We're conserving it because we live in the high desert and we need to conserve it. We're not conserving it so people can move in from all over the place, although growth obviously is necessary, and we need a mitigated small growth, 1%, 2%, which is doable and sustainable in the high desert. And so why are we looking at this humongous growth? We need to ask ourselves if that, and you, excuse me, need to ask yourselves, is this the legacy that you want to leave? Do you want 74% of the population that voted for Kathy Rusing on big subjects like as new growth and development, which is just boomtown, we might as well be Calgary, Canada? And do you want it to be on the basis of selling out all our water to this new growth, which is what this expansion zone does? Let's do a giveaway here, folks. We'll just shoot them $100 bills, but something more, much more precious, which is our limited shared water resource. Another thing was, I've been told, I don't know how many times, by the Water Department, by council members, that we get a 70% recharge. Now all of a sudden, we're getting a 90% recharge, and that's been done for several years? I don't understand where we came up with that new number. So if anybody could elucidate, advise me on where that new number, 20% more? And if we do so, then why are we not requiring more than 60%? And I do applaud the change to get 60% on our recharge, but why are we not requiring more? If we get 90% from everybody? That's the math, people. If we get that, why aren't we requiring it? Another thing is that ADWR clearly lost, clearly states that no groundwater will be allocated to new developments, and then later on, and that new developments much, must prove 100-year water supply. Our new water policy doesn't, okay, our new water policy ignores and flouts both of those.
Thank you.
We did not get a monsoon, there's 70% of our water supply gone this year.
That was the last one.
All right, so real fast, we're kind of moving into the next meeting. Clyde, can you take one minute and talk just briefly about what you're hearing from ADWR in regard to this 1990, and I know, well, anyway, speak to it real fast.
Sure. I guess one point of confusion is that this is not new water, discovered water, water that we weren't intending on using. This is water that was built into what we were going to use. We can just do more with it, so we don't need additional sources from somewhere else to do what's already in the general plan. When we first got our allocation of water, it was for what was in the general plan. We can do that general plan with less water than we had initially thought.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Lamerson.
Yeah, Clyde, don't sit down. Thank, thank you very much. It's just a quick question, I've asked you this before, all right, and this is not to be obstinate to anybody, but the water service agreements, whether it's in or outside of the city limits of Prescott, the city of Prescott can draft an agreement in a manner that directs portions of that water to achieve our safe yield goal. Am I mistaken?
We could draft such an agreement, yes.
Thank you very much.
Mayor Proton.
Thank you, Clyde. I think it's important that, that the public understand the expansion area, could you put this up on the screen, is that possible? Because when I hear about this humongous expansion area, and this expansion area was actually identified in the general plan, I see this is probably where Prescott will expand. So if you look at the, the blue line, the parameter, that is the AMA, the dark lines, those are the Prescott city limits. Today, we actually, we actually, Clyde, do we actually service today, do we service properties outside of the city limits with water?
We do, quite a few.
Thank you. And then if you look at the blue, that's the expansion area. It's not humongous. It's areas that are close contiguous to the city of Prescott. The advantages of doing that, houses are going to be built there. Houses will be built in that area, in the county, they can do it tomorrow, they don't need our permission. They can drive, do a well and a septic tomorrow and go into business. What we're saying is, if we provide water to this area outside of the city limits, then we will have everybody on Prescott city water that's in that area, and we can get that recharge, they won't be on wells, and they won't be on septic systems. They will be on our sewer, and they'll be in our city water, they will have to adhere to our requirements, which then will conserve. This is such a smarter plan than to just go, "Everybody, do your wells, do your septics." And that is the expansion area, it is not all over the county, it is not all over the AMA. What is in blue is the expansion area.
Councilman Good.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to thank the staff and, and the leadership for making some appropriate changes in the initial policy. Reducing the amount of administrative approval down to two acre feet is a, is a good positive. 60% overall recharge is better than it was. I still think that we, since we have pretty good evidence that the major new approved planetary developments are returning substantially higher numbers than 60%, I don't see why we can't include new developments to be established at an 80% or plus standard, since it's, seems to be easily achievable, we ought to codify that.
Phil, that was my point within the water service agreements, we can, that was the point.
Well, as long as it's included in the policy for the public to, to know that it's there, they would be much more assured that we're getting the recharge treated affluent back to the recharge ponds and, and moving it towards, towards the aquifer, even if it does take a long time. I applaud the establishment of this sewer policy commission. I think until that meets, along with the stakeholders and the AMA to come together and start discussing what all of those stakeholders can do to commit to reaching recharge, I think it, we could delay the vote on this until at least after those meetings, so we have some understanding of what the willingness is for our neighbors to contribute to this. We can't solve the overdraft on our own, we've got to have partners willing to step up and take some of the leadership that Prescott has provided, and we've been able to demonstrate that we can reduce per capita demand significantly, but we need their buy-in. The, the ongoing proliferation of exempt wells in the county is such an uncontrolled impact to our overall goal, there's got to be some willingness to either voluntarily do it or get legislative approval to do it. I mean, just our last meeting, we voted to extend sewer to a wildcat subdivision, and that certainly makes it clear that unless we take some action, we're going to see more of these wildcats show up, and then we don't have any influence at all on, on where that goes unless they're willing to at least connect to our sewer system. So these are still kind of undefined areas that I want to make sure the policy doesn't expand growth or accelerate growth, or at least pulls our partners into a better plan to, to reach. to reach safe yield. And lastly, I think since Attorney Halsted is adamant that we are not violating any of the ADWR guidelines under the 1980 agreement, I can't understand why ADWR isn't willing to give us a written statement substantiating that, since it's clearly obvious. Why not? If we had that, then the community at large would feel much more assured that we're not going to end up in some type of a legal battle here, and God knows, we have enough of those already. So thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Blair?
Well, I guess I want to just take a little bit more of a positive approach real quick. I know we're long in the tooth here, but, you know, we've come a long ways in 20 years that I've been sitting here, and our policy has come way further along in the fact that, going back to the gentleman that got up to talk about Doran Homes, we asked Dave Grounds, the owner, when they came in with their final plat if they'd put in cisterns at every one of their houses at Saddlewood. That was done. We don't get something if we don't ask for it. And working with other communities, thank you, Mayor, is a positive thing to do, requiring certain things is a positive thing to do. But I want to let people know out there, we're not delivering water to Chino, we're not delivering water to Prescott Valley with this expansion zone. It was all predicated in the general plan and voted on by 80% of the people in this city. That expansion plan and those lines in the sand were drawn back in the day when Sam Steyer was mayor of the city of Prescott in 1998. These are not new lines in the sand. So I want everybody to know that we're not out there nilly-willy picking places where we want to expand the city of Prescott. And by the way, if we deliver water outside the city of Prescott, it's to the existing zoning that's in the county. So we're not increasing density, we're providing quality, conservation, and environmental protection to areas around us to hook up to a sanitary sewer and a water system, which also, if we do that, provides the opportunity for us to run a sewer line along Williamson Valley Road to bring in Hokey Gan who's on city water in the county, 400 houses on septic systems over the past 60 years that are running into Granite Creek. And we want to talk about keeping our lakes healthy and environmental impact. It's not about serving water, it's about bringing it back safely and protecting our environment and our recreation and our whole conservation process. So it's more than one thing, and I think we've done a great job, so I'm going to break my hand over our backs for us.
Sounds like a good way to get to safe yield. Councilman Sishka?
Thank you, Mayor. Couple things, let's talk about growth. Prescott, over the last 30 years, has averaged 2.5%. Prescott Valley, over the last 30 years, has averaged 14.5%. Chino Valley has averaged about 5.5%. So Prescott is growing slowly, and certainly slowly in comparison to our neighbors. The other thing is, we need to establish something other than, okay, now we want this, and now we want this. Because the big objection was, you're not paying attention to Prop 400. Well, up there, they just said, "We would apply Prop 400 to all of these additions outside of city limits." So I'm not sure what the problem is. The other communities around here don't have Prop 400. They're not limited to a supermajority. So, you know, I think that, number one, Prescott's not the big problem, and number two, we need to come to a situation where we can agree that this is what is right for the area. I think that what Prescott's doing is outstanding right now. And I think that, you know, this would truly be throwing out the baby out with the bath water. So I don't mind working a little longer to get to a good result, but I certainly do mind the goalposts changing every time we get in here.
Mayor Proton?
Thank you, Mayor. I know we're short on time, I just want to add, often I've heard people, when we talk about the expansion, well, we should just annex it. Why aren't you annexing it? So if you, why would we annex that area if we can get the best and not have to annex it? Because once we annex that expansion area, we have to provide police, we have to provide fire, have to take care of streets and roads. This way, we are able to provide the water, get the recharge, keep people off of wells and septics, and Kathman takes care of the fire, and the sheriff takes care of the law enforcement. So it's better for our city in the long run on many different levels. Just wanted to add that.
All right, very good. Well, thanks for hanging with us, little long meeting here, very, very important work to do on water policy. I want to thank you all for your participation, your comments, we value those, and this meeting is adjourned. We will come back in...